It was a firm, he said it was a firm in Boston. I mean, he's right out of college and is up here with his college buds, one of whom their grandparents are our neighbors. And, yeah. He had the Zoom interview and didn't bring a necktie.
Oh, good. Well, it was funny because they were left over from work.
Yeah, I know, Dad's looking through it, he's like, "Oh, I recognize these."
And like, "What am I gonna do with these?"
So funny. I don't. I think maybe Wendy?
Hi, Amber.
We've got Kathy, Deb, and Amber in Zoom.
For you, who's calling you?
Jess, Mary, Jenny, Claire.
Nope.
We do have four, Brian.
Okay, thanks. We'll give it another, I mean, I think Jenny's gonna be here.
Jenny driving over, is she logged in? Hey, Paul.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
So, Row, we just on. Kathy, Deb, and Amber.
Yes.
She said she was in. She is, she's on.
Beth and I put some streets in the YouTube group for tomorrow. Restock the silverware, you know, a little thing.
That's great.
Oh. How did I miss you? I was gonna say, hey, look away that one.
I think it was. Because I called them, the first person was like, "You're not getting what you're talking about."
All four of you, one. One shot. Smile.
They don't know, I'm not even know.
You're like, "I'll just leave." Sticking my tongue out right now.
Hey, on the minutes here, is this the Zoom link where the recording is up there? Or is that just the Zoom link that's left open? No, on the minutes. Because we save the recordings, right?
Yep. I don't know, why is that question? I don't, I don't know. If the Zoom link on the minutes is to the recording?
Hi, can you hear me?
But when the minutes.
This is Kathy Catrini.
Is that Mary?
Kathy.
No, it's Kathy. I just wanted to tell you that Mary's having a hard time getting in. I gave her all the numbers I could, but... So, she'll be here or not?
Two, six, five, four, or two, six, four, five?
Two, six, four, five, eight, six, four, yeah, two, six, four, five.
She's in. That's Mary.
She's in? Okay.
That's Mary, right?
It's her number.
All right, so it's just Jenny, we've got Mary on as well then?
Yep.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic.
United States of America. And to the, oh, which it stands.
Is it both?
And to God, and to reasonable liberty and justice for all.
Do you have one, Jeff, mention the agenda?
I do, under number eight, under nominations, the following. For middle school girls would be Kelly Grant. For middle school boys, Trevor Gray. Yes, basketball. And for varsity girls assistant is Jeff LaRacheau. And these are all the same that were there in this position last year. So we do have those sports going on, so we want to get those coaches nominated and approved. And that is, that is it?
Jenny's in.
Okay, thank you. All right, minutes were set out with the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for January 14th, 2021, and the special approval meeting of January 28th, 2021?
So moved.
Chris?
Second.
Paul?
I think I'm in there now and unmuted. I came back in. Can you hear? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great, thanks. Sorry for the, for the problem. I'm there.
Row, I've unmuted myself over here, so I'm on over here now too. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes, January 14th and January 28th.
So moved.
Thanks, Row. Chris and Paul second, any comments?
I did want to suggest if we can, the hyperlink that we left on here on the Zoom links, look like those are for joining the meeting, that maybe we take those off, and then if there is a hyperlink for where the recording is, for prosperity, that maybe that can be put on to the, addendum on the end of it to say, "For a recording, review of it, click on that."
Is that doable? I don't know enough about it. Is that an easy thing to do?
Right now, the Zoom meetings are stored on a server that is on my computer. I, that's the ID, the possibility of storing those later, so right now.
Let's, then I'll retract that, maybe propose that we upload the link wherever we get it to the website, and just maybe have a wide basis. For the recording, please refer to the website, maybe we can get them archived on the website.
I can reach out to Sean too and figure out the best way to do that. Okay, anything else for the minutes? All in favor will do in the room first?
Your guess one.
And then, Chair has one. Let's see what we got here. Kathy? I missed you if you said anything, Kathy?
I'm here.
Jenny?
Yep.
Take that as a yes. Deb?
Yes.
Amber? Amber, you there? All right, how about Mary?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Public comments? I don't see any public here. Online, any public comments? You can just speak up today. Nothing heard. Chair of comments, really, just kind of a logistics. There seems like there's been some confusion lately about if we're in person or if we're doing things remote. The superintendent and I, our philosophy is that if the school is in person, then we will have the board meeting in person with the remote option. If the school is remote that week, then the whole board meeting goes remote. That's the only time that it goes remote. So if there was confusing, I apologize, but that's how we'll do it from here on out. That's all I have.
Okay.
Chris?
That's great, Brian. So in other words, then, we need to be at the building unless the school is closed.
No, 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 no. Everybody has the option, even if we're doing it in person, everybody has the option to Zoom in, like you're doing today.
Okay, but it probably is easier if we're there.
It's certainly easier if everyone's here, but I'm not gonna tell them I have to be here.
Okay, no, but that's a good, that's a good, that's a good guideline then for us, and we'll plan on that in the future.
Okay, see, I feel like I've made things more confusing here. If school, if, if school is in person, if the students are in person and the staff are in person during that week that we have a board meeting, then there will be an in-person board meeting. That does not mean that everybody has to be here in person, there's still a Zoom option for that. If the school has gone remote for that week, then the entire board meeting will be remote. Everybody will be remote, there is no in-person option then. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yep.
I have a couple things. First of all, the ESR of number two, Grant, RSU 78, has put their application in. We were awarded $182,518.80. We have budgeted in our application to maintain our current staff through 8/31/21. Remember, there was some positions that were put in first, that expired as of 12/31/21. So now we, we're all set with that. We've also using that money towards credit recovery and to close the achievement gaps through summer assistance programs for the students. And we're also looking at element, excuse me, cleaning supplies and teaching materials. And we have budgeted so that we spent that full amount. You may hear things with regards to vaccinations. I just want to let everybody know, both public and the staff, that the DOE has remained on the outside, around the sidelines, as the determination of 1B or vaccinations is being controlled through the governor's office, CDC, and DHHS. Right now, school districts do not have a deciding factor in who, when, and where those that are in the age brackets, seventy and over right now, and hopefully soon to be sixty-five, up to sixty-nine. Obviously, they can get their vaccinations, but as far as schools, we do not have any further information at this point. And any other remaining points I have tonight will be under the agenda items. Any questions if there are any?
Just a note of congratulations, Chris, that you were able to write that successful grant. Obviously, $182,500 is a big booster shot in the arm, and you should feel very proud that you were successful in getting that money from the state.
Well, thank you for that and all the other schools, superintendents, and administrators. That's federal money that we've been given, and we use our title, which is really where the administrators come in, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Georgia?
End this to you. You want to do yours?
All right. Okay, hi, everybody. As everybody knows, I think now, our sports season's up and running. It's really nice to see everybody actively in play again. Our live streaming is working well, and I've had a lot of fun watching the games from afar. It's been awesome. Our budget process is well underway. We've been spending a lot of time meeting with teachers and teams, and, you know, just really trying to bring a, you know, the most accurate budget we can. We've, we've actually been ordering a lot of supplies out of this year's budget, because we did have a lot of money remaining, or some money remaining. And so we have been, you know, doing that. That's really, I think, helped give us a little bit of relief in for next year's budget. And I, I know Chris just mentioned that, Mr. Downing just mentioned that we have applied for the SRF grant. And we also applied for the Title I reallocation grant as well, which will pay, or may pay for a portion of our summer programming. Our summer programming is gonna be very vast this summer. It is gonna be a K to 12 program. We have a lot of students that have some credit, credit recovery to do. We've got some, you know, we've got some work to do with our younger students too, and sort of trying to close that gap. So, you know, we're really hoping for, you know, a, a lot of attendance. And we do have some staff that are interested in, that are ready to go, which is really exciting. And that's all I got. Is there any questions?
Georgia, can I just, just ask a quick question? In terms of your budgeting process, have you set a percentile goal with respect to what you're working within in terms of parameters? Is it a 2%, 3% increase, or are, how is that working?
I'm sorry, Mary, you were cut off at the beginning of that. Can you repeat your question?
Oh, yeah, I just wondered if, if they were working within a percentile parameter with respect to budgeting. Typically, board says, you know, come in under 2%, 3%, 5%. And I just was curious as to whether or not they, you've been given a dictate with respect to that and the budget.
No, I can answer that. They weren't, the administration was not given a, a certain percentage that they needed to stay below. But I will address the first draft of the budget in the finance update.
Oh, okay, terrific, thanks.
Anything else? All right, student rep, Nia Autumn? I can bring this one over.
So, the Skunk Boys Ski Team has had three races. We had one yesterday that was at Saddleback. It was very exciting to be back at our home mountain, and everyone is enjoying training and the opportunity to go to the race. The girls have won one race out of three, and the boys have done pretty well on their side of things, so it's going for.
Second, so pretty up high there. The girls' basketball team is doing really well this season. Last Tuesday, they went against Valley and won, and tomorrow they're going against Dargo. And that's all we've got for sports.
Thank you. I'll be happy when we don't have to do this anymore. All right, committee reports. Kathy, policy?
I wanna make sure, am I on? Yeah, okay. Policy Committee met on February 3rd. It was very productive with a few action items to be addressed later on in this meeting. And I need to make a correction on last month's board meeting. I asked you to adopt policy AC, which is non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action, when I really should have just asked you for a revision of that policy to, and it is revised to reflect new state and federal requirements. We already had the policy, so it was not an adoption, it wasn't a revision, and I want to make that clear. And next policy meeting will be Wednesday, March 3rd. After that, I'll address the policies later on in this meeting.
Thanks, Kathy. Finance update, met just before this. Our financial statement for the last month, everything is on track. The big item is the first draft of the budget that was presented to the Finance Committee. Right now, Mary, to answer your question, it's coming in at about a 7% increase from last year. There are a few big-ticket items that cause that. One of them is loss of a grant, the Gear Up Grant, which allowed visits to colleges. What am I leaving out? Georgia, what else did that do? Pays for online classes, software. So that was about $25,000 lost there. The other thing is that we have a full-time behavioral specialist. That cost is $120,000. The really reason we didn't see that last year is because we set up a reserve fund for that first portion of the contract for that person for this school year. So those are kind of the big-ticket items, but 7%, it's just the first budget draft, that's what we're looking at. Other things that came up there. There is a rule with the state that you are not allowed to hold over any more than 3% of your budget from year to year. So any overage or unallocated funds, you've got to do something with, or you could potentially lose it. We are talking about, right now, trying to iron out some of that going to capital reserves, some of that going to support staff reserve fund, some of it possibly a special ed reserve fund. So we're ironing out that stuff right now, but there will be some of that. And also, some of that will be used to pay down a portion of next year's budget as well. So we're ironing out the details there. We're meeting every week from here on out. Next week doesn't count because of the vacation, and that's about it for finance. Anybody have any questions?
So, very quickly, Brian, that 7%, does that, is that impacted at all by this recent $182,500 grant you just got? Or is that part of that whole 3% holdover that you're gonna need to spend it this year?
That grant is for this year. That does not count as a holdover, correct, Chris?
Right, that 3% is based upon your operating budget.
Okay.
It does not involve any of the federal money that's been coming through COVID relief.
Okay, so that's not gonna impact our overall budgeting process at all? You're still gonna have to deal with that, with that parameter?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Right.
Chris?
So 7% in dollars is what, about $320,000?
Yeah, it sounds about right. It's a... Hold on a sec. It is a 325, somewhere there, yep.
Okay. And how much do we have for total surplus from the audit?
$860,000.
Okay. You said $860?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So possibly, we should absorb a good chunk of this increase.
No. Right now, they have budgeted in $250 from that $860 to, that's what's included in the budget. So the 7% increase includes the $250 from that, pay that down.
So really, so the really increase is $250 plus another $5, so it's a 12% increase?
No.
No. So every year, pretty much, we do this $250 to pay down the budget. Chris, you might be able to explain this a little better than I can.
All right, well, let me ask a clarified question for you in that room, because I understand that part. So, budget's $4.6 billion. We're saying, look at a 7% increase, it's about $320. Are you saying $250 minus, $320 minus $250, or saying $250 is already minus before the $320? That's what I would like.
That's correct. $250, it is $320 plus $250, if you're looking at it that way.
So it's $570,000 increase to the budget. Year-over-year. What was budgeted last year versus?
No, no, because we had that in there last year too. That $250 was in there last year as well, so it's apples to apples, it's 7%.
So you're just saying the $250 is the baseline it's in every year?
Yes.
Above that, we have a $320 increase, of which we haven't, we're not gonna be able to allocate any of that $860 to.
We haven't determined that yet, but there is a reason not to allocate too much to that. And Chris, do you want to speak to that?
One of the things that you look at with the carryover, using that revenue towards balancing the budget, for lack of a better term, is that, that that can affect the budgets down the road. And one of the biggest concerns right now is that with state subsidies being decreased.
Right.
The concern is what will happen next year and the year after. And what superintendent's projecting out right now is avoiding what they call the three-year cliff. That's a major concern. I mean, you can increase the amount of carryover from $250 to say $300, to say $350. And then you start, you know, if you do that, what are you gonna do here? So those are the figures that you, you look at the revenue side, and what's coming in for revenue. That's where that $250 comes in.
Yeah, no, I understand, because I mean, municipalities do this all the time where they have what's called an overlay in this. They have an adjustment so they can try to keep a fairly stable mill rate. So there isn't a big jump two or three years down the road due to a surplus one year versus a minus the next. Obviously, we have these, this is a unique year and last year was a unique year. So you've got to be careful in your long-term budgeting that you don't eclipse yourself.
Correct.
So, the other thing that's important to understand too at some point is, you know, we've got to increase health insurance costs and labor costs. Which probably contribute to, our labor is 60% of our budget, I think, something like that. So, so those are kind of inevitable costs that are going to increase on those pieces. So, okay, I was just trying to understand where we, where our.
And on that, we have not, we won't receive probably until March or even April what our insurance rates will be.
Right.
We have to, right now, we budgeted in 10%.
That's a prudent, that's prudent activity to do that, I would agree. So the, and I agree with your premise that probably state funding is definitely not going to increase and a likelihood decrease. Although we don't get a lot, as an island school, from state funding.
Correct. Mainly special ed.
Mainly special ed, which has been our increasing cost center for, as long as I've been on the board. That has gone up, that's our highest increasing cost year over year.
Which brings another yellow caution flag, and that is called maintenance of effort. We have to maintain, because if you drop that cost center.
Right.
The state will then reduce your subsidy. So you're in that sort of double jeopardy, which are all the things that are really happening this year because of lower enrollment. So therefore, you have many lower special ed students. So it's, this is.
On the plus side, we had a 50% increase in enrollment. So those who have been upset with us in the past about cost per student, we should be on the show in the group and there, right, Seth? So anyways, thanks for taking a couple extra minutes to kind of clear those pieces. I know budget, I think, is probably one of the more common things that the public has questions on. And I think bringing up these key elements early on in the process, I think it's going to help further the discussion. And I encourage as much of the public to get involved. Unfortunately, what I see happen year after year is everybody shows up when we're on page 12 instead of when we're on page one and two. And so I encourage that once we have that first draft out, that people can start looking at it and asking questions in the early stages rather than waiting to stand up in June.
And I will say this, so the state funding was about $28,000 lower for next year than it was this year. And then the other thing to think about is last year during the budget process is when COVID started to really hit.
Right.
But we had a budget, which I think was about a 5% increase, correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers?
6.2.
6.2, not that you had to work at it. And we made the decision to whittle that down and go as bare bones as we possibly could, knowing that people were going to be impacted by COVID financially. And we got it down to 3%. So you've got to take into account the fact that we did very consciously make that budget as bare bones as possible last year. So some of the increases this year that we've already talked about, you're not seeing, even with that bare bones, a bunch of people requesting a bunch of extra stuff in this budget. That's kind of where we're at this year.
So hearing what you're saying there, you would advise probably the public to not only look at the 19 of the 2021 budget, but go back and look at the 1920, what the historical costs were, which is great how we do our budget structure. We changed that a few years ago where we showed three or four years. So when people are looking at these things, they can kind of see the trend data of the ups and downs. Because I guess from what I'm hearing, is you did a modified budget for 2021 in anticipation of the pandemic. So we may see some historical numbers in the 2122 that reflect closer to the 1920 budget versus the 24.
Potentially, yes.
And some cost there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for finance? All right, Ginny, facilities?
Um, we update on some of the, what's happened in the building. The big thing is that we did purchase the, the filters. And there were portable filters and they're working very well in the classroom. Each classroom will have one. We were short a few, but everyone will have one and they seem to be working quite well. We also began the conversation about having a second egress in case we ever need to get the buses out of the school area. And we are beginning to look at what some of the costs might be and determining exactly what the second egress would be like. But it would be only for getting the public transportation in and out. It's not for automobiles, private automobiles. We spent some time talking about the capital reserve and what we might want to do with that. We have some things we are considering and we'll be concentrating on that at our next meeting. And we talked a little bit about long-range planning, planning and what things we see in the future that really we need to be saving and using the capital reserve for. That was it.
Thanks, Ginny. Can I ask real quick if everybody who's not speaking, can you please mute yourself? Just so that the background noise there is kind of getting in the way of the person speaking. Thanks. All right, any questions for Ginny for facilities?
Jenny, could I just ask a quick question? So this whole issue of second egress, that doesn't involve purchasing that piece of land, does it? So that our buses could exit more than one place?
Well, the reason it doesn't include it is it is under contract and it likely is not going to be available. So we decided to concentrate on the other one until we had a determination on that.
Okay, thanks, Jenny. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, team leader report, Seth. Yep, I'll get rid of this.
All right, I'm going to start with a bunch of student recognition. I hope I get everyone, I have a lot of pieces of paper here. First off, Emma Jaco de Combe and Emily Eslack received first semester recognition awards from Foster's. Ella Shaefer, Shaefer has submitted her first, her three poem performances to Virtual Poetry Out Loud. For the fourth year in a row, Emma Jaco de Combe has been selected to participate in the Maine All-State Honors Music Festival. This year, because of COVID, students submitted video auditions. The first video requirement was to sing a scale. The second requirement was to sing their part of five-part, oh boy. Madrigal? Madrigal, thank you, Abby. The final requirement was to sing in Italian area. So that is happening virtually in May. Now, Scholastic Art Awards, these students got an honorable mention. Tori White, oh no, sorry, that's another thing. Art Awards, Lexie Batchelder, Adeline Hemingway, Winnie Larishell, Sarah Mosley, Bristol Quimby, Ella Shaefer, Amelia Stokes, all got honorable mention in art. In, where am I? Tori White got an honorable mention for writing a short story. Silver Key in Art, Autumn Sky Williams for Mixed Media. And Emily Eslack for Mixed Media, that was a Silver Key Award. And in writing, Tori White got an honorable mention for a short story. I already do that one, probably. And Autumn Sky got a Silver Key for her writing. And Miss Amami wanted me to point out that usually they start in Maine, but this year it went straight to all the Northeast states. And there's like 10 states and 500 students. And her piece got selected out of that, and it was Black Women and Their Children Matter, a critical essay. So, I think I got them all. Okay, that's all our recognition. I got Ella Shaefer's Bonanza Poetry Out Loud, that's going to be virtual, yeah. I got everyone. A lot of good stuff going on. And I was supposed to have a report about the NUIA assessments, but we are still wrapping them up today. Some of the elementary kids are doing their last test session, so I'll have a full report next month. Looking at the data so far, it's kind of a little bit all over the place. Like some, one middle school class is looking really good with exceeding the winter norms. But looking into some of the elementary stuff, we're showing more like we're on track with the fall norm, which kind of makes a lot of sense because of last spring, we started the year in the hybrid model. We've had three remote sections. So when you look at in-person learning time, it kind of makes sense, kind of expected to see that. But we still have kids finishing up, so I'll be able to do a full report out. One interesting thing, so we, this time we did it with the kids in K through 2. And we're like really nervous about this, you know, the, like organizing it, we did them half groups. We'd pull one half of the class out to go do something elsewhere. And the first day I started, there was this little kindergarten sitting there with their lap, little iPad, getting ready to take a NUIA test. I'm like, oh gosh, what have I done? Like, you know, but it turns out it was more stressful for the teachers. The kids just did it. I mean, they had fun with it. Sometimes the kindergarten class, they'd work for like 20 minutes, we'd suspend the test, so they'd do it again. So, and the numbers I'm seeing, you know, the kids definitely tried and, but I am seeing that it looks like we're not really with the winter norm, but more the fall norm. So, I'll have a lot more about that next time. That's all I have. Yeah. Any questions for me? Chris?
Seth, would it be at all possible, since I know, since the testing got into this month, is it, would it be possible that we could get some of the results for the summary with the board packet? So that we could have a chance to review it before the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
I don't want to put an extra, anything else going on, but that's just going to be, that would be too much of a burden. If it's not, that would be great to get.
No, yeah, what I'm going to do is I'm going to do, I already started the spreadsheet. The last time we did the school-wide, it was 3 through 11, was the spring of 2019. So I'll show that and then I'm going to have this round with the norms. So I'll have that in there and then some commentary about the specific breakdown. Yeah, and then I'll have a presentation obviously to explain it all. And it's, hopefully it's implications on program planning for next year and curriculum, so. Welcome.
And congratulations, Autumn. All right, appointments, resignations, nominations. Chris?
I have one appointment that I want to make you aware of. Jake Simons is EdTech and Special Ed, fill the long-term vacancy that we need. And then I have known resignations at this point. And then I have the nominations that I brought to you for basketball.
All right, and does anybody, these are the same people that were in these positions last year. Does anybody want to hear any more information on them?
No, I just advised we take Jake separate and then we can take the other three previously held as one.
Jake, the appointment we don't need to vote on.
Appointment we don't need to, so then the three, I propose we take all three.
Yeah, we're going to do that. So, need a motion to approve Kelly Grant as the middle school, middle school girls' basketball coach. Trevor Gray, middle school boys' basketball coach. And then the vars, is it the girls' varsity assistant coach is going to be Jeff Larishell. Chris, second? Karen? Any comments, discussion? Chaircast one, I heard. Anyone? All right, motion passes. Update on MPA Sports. Chris?
Yes, I wanted to, along with George and Seth and Jeff, is just to sort of let you know what happened with the MPA and with skiing and with girls' basketball. I know information went home, but I think it's important for you to hear. And also, hopefully I'll contain my frustration as I tell you this. Back on November of 2020, the Maine Principals Association came out with bulletins, which explained each sport, but also had a requirement that if a county was yellow or red, that no activity between schools would take place. So when we came to you and asked for the administration to make the decisions, that's one of the things that we informed you on. So we started practice according to the MPA guidelines and we actually extended, I think it was like Phase 2, because of winter break and we kept the practices going within. And then we came to mid-January and we had a, the color code switched us from green to yellow. And going on the November guidelines, we made the decision that we would have to stop the unscholastic activities. We could still maintain practice. And then, right before that, unannounced, the superintendents in schools, the MPA stated that they will allow yellow counties to practice for the sports season bulletins, but no games would start until February 8th. We learned about that after the fact and realized that that yellow change was based upon two counties down in the southern part of the state, which had been yellow since the basically beginning of the school year in the second quarter. Then, the Wednesday before the Friday where we changed from green to yellow, the DHHS commissioner said that the yellow designation would not be considered when it comes to athletics. It would be left up to the local decision. So then the MPA stated that they would follow the DHHS guidelines. And thus, we met and we reversed our decision. So we would follow the original and then changes were occurring, but the communication around the state was not. And we followed up, we evaluated it, we're glad we made the change. We never wanted to go without them to begin with. Ski team has been skiing and our basketball team has been playing. And that's, that is frustrating. And to add to the frustration even more, the National Federation of High School Sports, which is like the controlling power of high school unscholastic sports, has now gone on record that they will no longer classify sports as low, moderate, or high risk. It will be left up to the states, which then means it will come back to the locals. So, we're going full force, more power to our kids because they're taking the necessary steps to maintain their health. And we care about our kids and we'll do the same thing. That is my update.
I'd like to thank the administration for obviously working through all the differing guidelines, the changes, but also balancing physical health and also student mental health. I think it's important to, those are both physical health in actuality, but I know there are people who would not want sports to happen at all. I know there's people who want sports to go without, you know, any precautions whatsoever. There is a balance there that the administration, I think, is trying to do. Outstanding, or they are doing outstanding job of trying to meet that. And, and it is important to keep in mind the, the mental health aspect and just any level of normalcy that students can have. Because that is also going to have an impact on these kids in addition to the, everything else that's going on with, with COVID. It's my two cents. Anybody have anything, questions for, for Chris? Chris?
I just wanted to reiterate some of what you said, Brian, and also I really appreciate that the administration took the time and additional information was presented, evaluated it de novo, and then made a decision. And, you know, it was working on stuff on Friday nights and through the weekend to come up with a plan to make it work. And I think being able to do that race at Saddleback this week was huge. And that wouldn't have happened without your administrative team taking the time, looking at the, looking at the information, evaluating and speaking to other schools, other districts, and making, making the right decision. And, you know, a lot of smiles happened this week and the fact that the community is very much behind that as well as. being able to do basketball and uh, that's working extremely well with the live streaming and the community gets it and uh, and I think appreciates the hard work that you folks went through to figure it out because it's not an easy path, especially when you got organizations going. Not it, you guys figure it out. So I, you know, it's an extra burden. So thank you for your, all of your extra efforts and time into it. It's duly noted and much appreciated.
On behalf of everybody, thank you and for the kids, we'll do it every time. And that, I have one other thing that I just got uh, before I came up here this morning, the DOE, Department of Education, uh, will be coming out with some new guidelines for music and chorus. Hopefully it'll either be tomorrow, but I would say probably during the vacation week so that when kids get back, we may be able to get more normalcy with our music and drama and band programs. Hopefully we'll know soon on that. We're missing that too.
Any other questions or comments on that subject? Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll turn this off.
Yeah, just quickly, I um, I got to be at the start of the ski race yesterday. And you know, wearing the mask doesn't seem so different when you're at a ski mountain. And I saw kids, you know, following the rules from what I saw, the coaches being great and just kids having fun. And what you said about not only the physical piece, but the mental piece, it was almost like normal. They were just lots of smiles, um, kids working hard. So that was really nice to see. It was, it was like normalness. It was good. Yeah.
All right, Jeff is not in here, is he?
He's in the Zoom room.
Oh, he is. Okay. Jeff, the update on the air filters, you there?
Yes, I am. Um, they came in yesterday and we got most of them running today. Uh, there's still a few more that we gotta put online and we were a couple short, so um, we put an order in for three more. So teachers seem to be happy with them.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Brian, there was one comment. Shout out to Liberty to talk to say that the other schools were very respectful of the mask and so were their coaches.
That's good to know. I was up there yesterday with my kids and I watched a little bit. It's good to see everyone up there. Um, my kids wanted to go down too with their seven and eight. I told them they might need to wait a couple of years.
Forerunners. Get them up there to forerun.
All right, into the uh, action items. Consideration of scheduling the week after April break as remote. Who wants to take that one?
I'll just point to George as a start.
I'll turn this off over here.
Okay, so um, you know, we all know that April break is is traditionally been uh, a time when a lot of families take vacation and and potentially um, that may happen this April as well. So in in anticipation of that, we thought that, you know, it might be a good idea to talk about this um, and to maybe have an open discussion. I don't know if we necessarily need to make a decision tonight. But um, you know, I do think it it makes sense to consider it um, in light of the, the um, protocol that our district has in place, which is a little bit more stringent than what the state, you know, is saying, or the CTC and the state is saying at this point in time. Um, we, if families um, travel um, outside of New Hampshire or Vermont, um, they, when they come back, we are asking that they would either quarantine for 10 days or they would test three to five days once they return back into the state, which is going to, you know, potentially put um, you know, a lot of us or a lot of, you know, um, of our community in sort of a remote state, I guess you could say, for a little bit. We did do um, you know, we did send out a survey this week and we asked staff, we asked our community, um, how many of you anticipate traveling over April break? And um, we currently have about 40 families that are either, you know, a yes or considering um, vacationing. So that is gonna be, you know, a lot to manage if um, you know, if we've got that many um, kiddos that are gonna end up being remote coming back because of quarantining issues. So just kind of wanted to throw it out on the table for a discussion, I guess.
So that's staff, that that survey, how many uh, are there to be traveling?
We don't have any firm numbers on that right now because there are a lot of people that are kind of up in the air um, with it. Um, there's still, I think, some people that are waiting to see like where we go with vaccinations, you know, how, you know, you know, and and obviously I think um, my understanding is once we vaccinated that the quarantining wouldn't take effect. And so there's, you know, and and where are we, you know, um, case-wise in the state, how are we looking? You know, a lot can change between now and then, so people are kind of up in the air with this.
Vaccination as far as quarantine, I'm only, you don't have to quarantine, they're just two weeks after your second shot, so.
Yeah. It's probably not, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Um, I heard Zoom couldn't hear me. All I said was that the non-quarantine rule only applies two weeks after you've gotten your second vaccination. So I don't know if that would actually come into play here for the timeline we're talking about. Um, do you think we could get better numbers by the next, by the March meeting?
I think so. You know, again, I just, I wanted to sort of put it, I wanted to sort of have a see the conversation about it and later we thought we transcarred with it, you know, because it it could potentially, you know, make it, get to that place and not have any choice.
Yeah, okay. I just say um, instructionally speaking to a decision like this, you know, if we're looking at that, those numbers is what's the biggest benefit educationally gonna be? You know, if we you know, try to piece it together with 30 to 40 kids. I mean, if we say, you know, 30 to 40 families, that's not 30 to 40 kids. That could be 50 to 60 kids, depending on the families that go. You know, if you're trying to piece together this, all these remote kids and some in-person kids and possibly substitute teachers in the building, we just make the decision early rather than later, say, look, it's gonna be remote. Um, that's it. My only concern is that some families may look at that as a additional week of vacation, but to be clear that, no, we're adding, we're adding this week to take care of this quarantining. You know, so please help us with that. But I think as we get closer, we don't make the decision tonight, it'd just be cleaner and you would offer one form for the week. And, you know, are the teachers trying to plan this? I think it would make, I think it would make sense, you know?
It would give us more time to to actually plan so we're ready for it when we come back.
Right. And realistically, uh, if these are, if these are school age families, they're not in the uh, vaccination structure right now. This is a 65 to 70-year-old plus group of people who will have had two vaccines. So you are looking at families who are gonna need to quarantine.
Yeah, or test.
Or test, that's right.
I'll be frank, I struggled with this a bit. I appreciate you bringing it up early so we can have a good, good discussion about it. I feel it kind of polarizes the haves and the have-nots. I think there's a lot of families that that don't, that that are struggling already with the four days versus five days, which we think, you know, we've established and I understand why we're doing four versus five. Ranging childcare or having to miss work. A lot of businesses are starting to term out the uh, the family cares act pieces that that's gonna terminate out, I think by March 31st. I'm not positive, but some of those additional aid that someone can get by staying home with their child or still get paid from work, some of that stuff's gonna start going away. So my concern is being closed for another whole week after that. Uh, generally I've seen in Rangeley, there's kind of those that it can afford go away for two or three weeks this time of year. We're always dealing with people leave a few days before, a few days after. It's one of the reasons we did intercession that way. Very, it could be that people say, okay, great, we've got two weeks now and then we're still gonna be missing people with remote into that third week, those other pieces. I guess we can't stipulate that people test, but I would generally think I know I've been tested several times with the Walgreens piece and it hasn't cost me a dime because of my insurance. And I think the state would say.
Yeah, but then it went back to.
People to test.
I don't need to say it.
So.
Just make the little boxes.
So my point is, is that I would like to more likely either have that or I know that the school is not, we've discussed this several times, not a daycare or any of those pieces, but if we go that route, then we can at least look at having an ability for those families who maybe don't have a lot of options and some of those students could come in and work in the Zoom scenario, but inside the school, based on those staff that are gonna be here, some kind of a contingency plan there. Cause I just think another whole week, there's people I know, they have to, when we go remote for the week, they can't work that week. And it's really tough. And April and Rangeley, for those who who work and have two jobs, that second waitressing or hospitality job is gone in April. Once the round closes, once the snow's gone, April and May are tough months. So I really would would like to look at if we, if it makes sense from educational that we're gonna have to teach hybrid and and go back to the, what is it, hybrid one, right? Four day, five days a week? Is that hybrid one? We gotta go back to hybrid one, that we can figure out some way to accommodate some of those families that just don't have those options with work in the childcare piece. And we could set up some kind of a Zoom study hall or something here for some of those students to be in the school with headphones and and still doing the interactive learning with the Zoom. Thank you.
It is a tough pill to swallow, I think, for people who don't leave town who are told we're going remote this week. And it's not because of active cases or anything like that, but it's because other people went away. That that's the people who do go away do need to stay out of the school. There's no way around that. Either, but otherwise, other than testing. But yeah, I I agree with Chris that it's that's tough for the ones who don't go away and then are told we're remote all week. I don't know, I how about between now and March meeting? Some options maybe for something between everybody in school or everybody remote? Is that doable?
How is that also treated on the staff level? Uh, I'm just wondering if a staff member goes away and they're out for three or four days because they chose to go away and quarantine, is that they use personal days up? Is that the plan or we, are they paid to remote or? I'm not trying to cause a problem here, I'm just curious at how that works procedurally. I don't know if we've even dealt with it contractually. So I don't know how to handle that. I can't hear anything. If you say something, Georgia, I could.
Is it a contractual question that you're asking or is it from a medical standpoint?
Well, I'm just trying to understand that piece, you know, if if staff, I'm not trying to restrict staff members or anything. I mean, I know that vacation, but like some staff members always plan to do that, be gone that time. Normally we do a school trip that time those pieces, but I'm just wondering how that's, how that's dealt with. I know in in the private sector, if I go and choose to go away and I'm out for two or three days, if I can't do my job remotely, there are some people in the company I work with that can't do their job remotely, they have to take personal days. If they can do their job successfully remotely and that includes teaching or whatever those pieces, I don't have a problem as long as the educational factor can be met. But I think that's something I think you as a staff and things should discuss and get settled before you get to that piece. Otherwise you could have a really tough week after vacation if you're, if you're, what, you may end up spending your vacation figuring out how to deal with after vacations, right?
It's a unique situation that we might have to look at sort of innovatively, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not opposed, as far as I'm concerned, if 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 it can be worked out so educationally, we're meeting the needs of the student. I don't want to restrict any staff member from being able to have their time off and do those pieces. I'm just thinking that's a logistic thing that's gonna be completely unique to you that you haven't had to deal with as much as, because Christmas, really, I don't think anybody went anywhere. And I don't know how you're dealing with after February vacation, if any, of your staff's traveling or those pieces, but just something I give it some thought, especially between now and last week, because you may have a couple scenarios where somebody didn't go outside these two states.
Yeah. Good points.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that? So re-attack in March on that? Okay.
Great. Thank you for uh bringing this up early. Very proactive.
All right, we got a bunch of policy um, stuff to take care of now. There's a motion to rescind policy J I A A R, senior privilege contract. Kathy, can you just talk through the basics of that real quick?
Uh, well, the reason why we're rescinding it is because it is covered in the student handbook, so it would be one less policy that uh, we would have in our manual. Did you hear me?
Kathy, can you say it one more time, please?
Okay, we want to rescind uh, the senior privilege contract in the uh, policy manual because it's already covered in the student handbook.
Okay.
We're gonna get a motion to rescind.
It's just red.
To rescind policy J I A A R, senior privilege contract?
So move.
Chris, second? Karen, discussion?
I'll second.
We got Karen. Any discussion on this?
Chaircast one.
We heard a chaircast one. Anybody in opposition? Motion passes or rescind policy J I A A R? And Kathy, uh, motion to adopt policy J L F R, reporting child abuse and neglect procedures. Can you talk to us about that?
All right, this is a, a, we're going over the J L F child abuse um, policies in general. And uh, I discovered we did not have this policy, which is actually the procedure for policy J L F. And we decided we wanted to adopt this policy to aid anyone who's making a report on child abuse with an easy step-by-step procedure to follow. Uh, it just basically, it breaks down the policy J L F, which we will be revising into steps. But because we didn't have this, we need to adopt it. Okay?
This.
The origin of the policy that we have in front of us?
The origin of the policy came from main school management and
MS.
The adult, uh, some revisions of R S U 20.
Great.
Obviously we lost a child due to child abuse.
This is a policy, was that your previous district? We've mimic it? Or adopt, looking to adopt?
I am recommending adopting it and the reason being is because it forces DHHS to follow up when a school sends something.
I I make a motion.
Real quick, the Kathy, can we do both of these at once? The revised policy J L F, do you want to talk through that?
Yes, the J, I think we could, yes. J L F is um, the basic policy of reporting child abuse and neglect. And it was revised uh, to more accurately reflect the MSMA policy, which was revised after the tragic incident that Chris is talking about. Um, the changes in the policy I have underlined the, from our old policy. So we're just revising this one and adopting the J L F R to go along with this J L F policy.
Okay, so Chris is motioning to adopt policy J L F R and to revise policy J L F. Second?
I second.
I'll second.
Okay.
I had one. Discussion on that. Uh, Chris, what's going to be the procedure for, when is scheduled training? Discussion on that. Chris, what's going to be the procedure for, when is scheduled training for this? Because obviously we've outlined some very key steps that need to be done, reports filed, those pieces. Is there going to be some kind of a training for the staff of this or is the staff already up to speed on this procedure?
I would say the training could have, they're up to date, but it could be reviewed in the staff meeting.
Okay.
The key is, the key is the follow-up to make sure that if it's reported, that they, the H H S gets back. To the reporting individual, so that they now will go in to check on it.
The concern for me on this is just that, I just want to make sure if we're adding certain action items in the procedure. We need to make sure we do those, otherwise we may create a breach of duty on our part.
We're all.
I don't want to create, so I want to make sure that we've got everything.
I just want to say that we had an expectant training at the beginning of the year.
Great.
It was like a four-hour training, which definitely covers all of the.
Yeah.
Super. I suggest we move the question.
All right, all in favor of adopting policy J L F R and revising policy J L F?
Chair cast one.
Chair cast one. Any opposition? Motion passes, adopt policy J L F R, revise policy J L F. Kathy, are you comfortable since it's easier in the room if I explain the next few policies?
Yes, go right ahead. You, you did the last two. The only one I did was the student representative, representation to the board, which was just a grammatical revision. So go right ahead. They're your babies.
So the student rep one out, just to expand on what Kathy said, the current policy just had for one student rep. We've got two, we had two last year. All it was is updating it to reflect that there can be more than one student rep. So motion to revise policy B V, B H, student representation to the board.
So moved.
Chris, second? All.
Second, yeah.
Chair cast one.
Chair cast one, any opposition? All right, motion passes, revise policy B V, B H. The next two, I'll just talk about together. It's the motion to revise policy B B A R and policy B E D H. B V A R are the school bylaws. And B V H is public participation at board meetings. Before last year, actually, the statute changed from public participation just being a nice to have, but not a requirement, to it is now a requirement. B V A R, the school board bylaws were incorrect in that they didn't reflect that. And also, we already have a policy dealing with public participation at board meetings. We don't need it repeated in the bylaws. So B V A R, that portion that deals with public participation has been deleted. And then B E D H has been revised to now reflect from M S M A. Language that we are in compliance with the requirement that we're gonna have public participation at board meetings. And one other little bit of that is, we also have gotten in the habit of having it on the agenda, but then also allowing public comments before an agenda item. That is in M S M A as an option, and that is one of the revisions that's in B E D H. So motion to revise policy B V A R and policy B E D H.
I still move.
I think that was Mary's second. So that's Karen, any discussion?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Chris.
I got a question under B V A R, section two C. The vacancy piece, absence for ninety days, do we cover somewhere else in our policies what constitutes at a meeting? You know, this, this Zoom, you know?
No, I didn't, I didn't even tackle anything else in those bylaws other than to remove.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you want more revisions to that, that would have to come at a later time.
No, I'm just asking if, if, if there is something out somewhere that covers what constitutes that, that you know.
Not that I'm aware of now.
Well, in Maine state law, it's pretty clear on what constitutes a meeting. It's more than two board members. Having a conversation.
Yeah, I think Chris's question is. What, it says if a, if a board member's absent for more than ninety days.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
First, I will say that I've seen in other places and I can't, I'm not, I can't pinpoint exactly.
No, that's fine, Brian. I just thought maybe you know of the top.
No, I, I do know there are, there are excused absences, like if somebody is, gets in touch with me before the board meeting, that kind of thing, but I, I don't know specifically. So if we need to.
No, I just think it's, we, in the past, we, in the past, when I've been on this board, we've had people six, eight months not show up and then no action taken. And so I'm glad there's, it says ninety days in here and it also says four consecutive meetings. That piece, because I've seen it, and I don't think they're doing, they're, they're doing the board a service by not being here or participating. So I'm glad there's, that's clear in this policy in the bylaws, because I've seen it as a problem. Nothing's worse than having an inactive member on the board. I think it's common courtesy to anybody, if you're not gonna be here or you're running late, I do that with you, notify you. Because I think it's important to determine there's a corps. And I know in the past couple of years, it's been some challenges on having a corps. So it wastes everybody else's time if we don't have a corps. So I, I think that's good. And I think it's covered. So I'd like to move the question.
All right. Anyone else?
Chair cast one.
Chair cast one, any opposition? All right, motion passes, we will revise policy B V A R and B E D H. All right, consideration of the position title, we've got literacy specialist position we formed at the last board meeting. I, I think it was the last one or the one before. Since then, there is some rethinking of what that should be called. Now the recommendation is a math and literacy interventionist. Does anybody want to explain that? All right, I'll finish off.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we, we talked about, and, and I guess in hindsight, I threw, it was my fault. I threw the name out, literacy specialist, a little too quickly. In my view, a literacy specialist is one who works with teachers, who takes on more of a, a, a coaching, you know, an instructional coaching. You know, position. Not to say that a literacy specialist can't work with children. But really, what I don't want to do is back, back ourselves into a corner where this person is looked at, you know, in only literacy. We want somebody who's gonna be able to intervene cross-content. And that's really, really important for us. So reading and math. And, you know, an interventionist is really sort of takes on a more diagnostic approach to, it's more on an individual. Basis. It's based on, you know, assessments and data that we get back. And, you know, this interventionist would be working to, working on very specific skills, like reading skills, letter naming, initial, initial sounds. Awareness, phoneme segmentation, you know, comprehension skills, syllable work. All of that stuff is like what an interventionist would really focus, you know, that would be their skill set. And at that, you know, at that lower level, and, and we also said that it would be K to five. This, this position could actually serve K to eight. And so I just, I, I feel like the, the name academic interventionist sort of really, you know, nails what we're trying to do here.
Georgia, what kind of background?
Just a quick question. This is on the agenda as a math and literacy interventionist. Do we want it to read academic interventionist?
I mean, I think in academia, it covers the bases, you know?
Is, which is in the, the actual job titles? If we looked it up with DOE, is it?
There's, I don't, there's not a certification for this, I don't believe. So this, this job would require some additional training in literacy. You know, obviously, that's helpful.
So Georgia, specific.
A bachelor's degree, you know, in education. And some additional training in those areas would be helpful.
So Georgia, specifically, what kind of background would you want them to have?
Is allowed to work with Gen X kids, not special ed kids. Which makes it a little different, because special ed students would, you know, have it in their I E P or their five oh four plan to receive extra help. What's happening is we're finding that students, especially in the lower grades, are falling behind in their literacy and math skills. And because they're not identified as either special ed or five oh four, sometimes they, they're losing out. And especially now that COVID has hit, and with remote or cohorts only being in school two days a week. We're finding that achievement gap is, is getting wider and wider. And so you're seeing interventionist becoming more and more something that schools have. And our elementary teachers here in Rangelley were seeing that our K through five kids were starting to slip. And so this will allow them to send them to get some extra help and get them over that, you know, that achievement gap, that, that bridge that they need to go over. And was also seeing that some of the middle school kids are starting to see that as well.
Chris?
Consentually, this sounds like a great thing, especially in this time of need where we're all over the place. Education-wise, in-school, remote, so many different combinations. I would think it would be easy for. And I, and I know those kids are, you know, some kids are getting off track and have somebody to kind of debate, up in the center. So just like to understand a little bit logistically how this is gonna work. I mean, is this gonna be a support staff position that's. A, is this gonna be a teacher that's under the union contract? I have a permanent setup, long-term position. Is it just gonna be filled as needed? I'd like to just understand a little bit more about what that constitutes.
We've already approved this position, so.
We have.
I don't.
Is this a change from?
We should have a discussion. It's just changing the title.
Right.
This position was put in through the help man.
Brian, switch to your computer.
Oh, my question, Georgia, my question is, did you hear me, Georgia?
Go again.
Hello? My question is, given that you're calling this individual an interventionist, and I have no issue with that. Which falls out of the parameters of certification, what do you anticipate are going to be their fundamental skill set? Or experience that they're gonna bring to that position? Have you, have you articulated what their level of training needs to be?
Yeah, absolutely. Mary, that's a.
We'll just keep going back.
Mary, that's a really good question. That, that information will actually come out in the interview process.
Okay.
So we, we have a really high-level, whatever I want to say, committee. And the questions in the interview process are gonna, you know, really sort of delve into that.
Okay.
Skill set. So, you know, we may, and this isn't one of the questions, but we may ask, you know. A student is showing up weekend, concept of work, what would you do? You know, how would you approach that? So, you know, it is, it is a skill, it is a very special skill set that would need to be in place.
Okay. And I know, you know, we, we talked at our last, at our last meeting that, for example, you know, the conditional certification for a literacy specialist. And that's not the position we're talking about, but would be a BA degree plus at least nine graduate hours in reading. Are you thinking that you'd like to see that kind of thing on people's resume?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And the same in math? Georgia?
She said yes, absolutely.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing. I apologize. I'm sure it's because I'm on the phone.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposed change, leave the job description, obviously, and the parameters to the discussion of. The knowledge of our superintendent and the staff to get that set.
So the motion from Chris is to approve a change of position titled from literacy specialist to K to eight academic interventionist, correct? Second?
David, demonstrate with experience.
Second.
I think that was Kathy. Any discussion?
Yes.
Chair cast one, anybody opposed? Motion passes. The position title goes from literacy specialist to K to eight academic interventionist. And then second position title change, we approved a technology technician a couple of months ago. That is being requested to change to technology coordinator. Can somebody explain the reason for that?
Sure.
The technology technician is really just not a true reflection of this position. This position is really more of a coordinator position, which is why we felt strongly about changing the name.
So moved.
Chris moves to change technology technician to technology coordinator. Is there a second?
Do you want to take it back, Brian?
I got it. Was there a second there?
I can second it.
Jenny seconded, thank you. Any discussion?
Chair cast one.
We have a chair cast one, any opposition? Motion passes, technology technician is now technology coordinator. Congratulations, Sean. All right, now a motion to enter executive session pursuant to title one, MSRA, section four oh five, subsection six, A, employment of employee.
So moved.
Chris, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Can we do a chair cast for this, Chris?
The move all, yeah.
No, I mean. All right, I'm gonna assume the, that motion is unanimous. What we're gonna do right now is I'm moving everybody but the board members into the waiting room, where Roe is gonna do that. And we are gonna enter executive session at seven twenty-two.
Okay.